Come back to our 16th briefing of the Mason County Commission. We just finished an executive session, potential litigation executive session, real estate. We're moving into support services with Frank Pinter. Frank?
Thank you, Commissioners. The first item is a review of the ARPA funding that we have in the ARPA projects. So there's been one or two changes that I've noted on this priority list. One is that the Department of Commerce has authorized the utilization of ARPA funding for the Hood Canal Communication requests for all of them. There's also been funding that came from the administrative office of the courts for $292,365. 702,000 of that is to Mason County to assist with Blake decision costs. $194,038 is for District Court and $33,027 is for Superior Court. So those funds are available to be used to assist the county with Blake expenditures. These are not technically ARPA funds, but I'm using this as a mechanism to define the availability of those funds and the intent of the county to utilize those funds. Additionally, this was brought forward in the previous section, but we do have Section 740 County Assistance Funds. These were state funds that were appropriated to the county for $255,893 to help in mitigating the implementation of the law enforcement and criminal justice-related legislative enactments between January 1 of 2020 and June 30 of 2021. So this is to assist the Sheriff's Office and the jail and criminal justice in implementing those changes that were put forward by the legislature in that time period. What the prioritization list shows is that we have about $1,337,000 still available to be allocated out of this tranche of ARPA funding. So as we move forward, I'm going to be looking to the board for some assistance in how you would prioritize spending those additional dollars.
Frank, quick question. Maybe Commissioner Trask has some insight on this from WASAC. But with the funding that we received for Blake, what are the parameters on that? What are some of the allowed use or intended use of those dollars? In particular, the ones that weren't directed to District and Superior Court? What do we need to be thinking about there?
That's a good question. All the counties are kind of in the same boat that we are. There's not been a whole lot of guidance to date, but a lot of questions are being submitted to Commerce to help us decide on that one. So the AOC money. We received a letter from AOC. But it sounds like everything that comes to us has to be approved by them. Am I right, Frank?
Yes. They will be the arbiters to whether or not it's eligible.
Right, which doesn't answer, yeah, it doesn't answer a lot of our questions. They're not giving us a whole lot of guidance, which is making it a little frustrating, to say the least.
I'm hoping we don't go down the path of can we spend it on this? Can we spend it on that? And that's how they give us the guidance.
Right. But that's how it's happening.
Yeah.
We're going through using WASAC to send in a lot of our questions. So hopefully we'll have some answers soon.
Okay. You know, as we get a little bit further along there too, I mean, you know, I think the intent is to, you know, drive that money obviously toward, you know, the criminal justice side of the budget. It would be really interesting to hear what conversations are happening in the OPD and the Prosecutor's Office, Sheriff's Office, you know, about where their needs lie as it relates to Blake. One of the other issues, just for Commissioners, for your own knowledge that has been coming up for us on the BHO side, has been the DOC is releasing Blake, people that were there on Blake-related charges, you know, without the usual post-release planning side of things. And so, you know, they're kind of just being dropped in communities across the state without having a housing plan and things like that. And so part of that is just how quickly these are being vacated. And so BHR, Terry Pressley from BHR had got her connected with Tim Whitehead in our Prosecutor's Office to talk about how they could work together on some of these issues as the counties file to have people, you know, to DOC release and all that kind of stuff. So those are other conversations that are happening. So as we're looking at some potential, you know, gaps created by the Blake decision, you know, that might be one area where, you know, if we can get some consensus from the criminal justice partners, that we might be able to help prop up with some funding in the interim.
Wow, that's a, that would be awesome. I know that we can cover any additional attorneys that we might need, additional court costs. Those are guaranteed. But that, that would be kind of cool if we could help with that.
Yeah, so, you know, putting, you know, that's why I think, you know, having them kind of put their heads together and seeing where the gaps are, where their resources are needed and make the most sense, I think would be really helpful. So, but we'll know more when, you know, it becomes a little bit clearer from the, from the state on what the intent here is and what those sideboards are.
Right, I think one of the mistakes that the legislature did was put the, give AOC the money to distribute it. I mean, they're courts, they're not Commerce. And I do think that they're regretting that decision as well.
One additional item I wanted to follow up. Last Monday, I was on a seminar with WASAC where they talked about the recovery of lost revenue and the mechanism that the federal government has come up with to identify that dollar amount. And what they've done is basically said, you go back three years, look at what your revenue was. Nationwide, the expectation is that county governments' revenue increase is about 4.5% a year. And what the federal government has done is they've created this Excel spreadsheet where you put in historical revenue numbers and put in 2020 and then 2021 revenue numbers. And if your revenue falls below that 4.1% number, that difference you can claim as lost revenue. You don't need to go through any other calculations or mechanisms to determine what revenue fees did we not collect and anything of that nature. So it becomes a very simple process.
Are we doing holistically then, only holistically, not anything by department?
Correct, holistically, county-wide. So I don't know if you know the Deputy Administrator in Thurston County, Robin Campbell. She went to Washington DC to sit with the Treasury Department and the NACO to talk through the process of how this was developed and how this Excel spreadsheet works. She went there thinking absolutely no way Thurston County was going to be able to recover any lost revenue because their revenue stream has been growing throughout this whole pandemic. Once they finished their revenue calculation, it turns out that Thurston County can collect almost $3 million of lost revenue. And how that happens is Washington State has a restriction on property tax increases of only 1%. So half of our revenue is limited to a 1% growth. The balance of our revenue would need to be growing at an exponential number in order to get past that 4.5% threshold. So almost every county in Washington State will in some way be eligible to recover lost revenue. So what happens there is, is that we can get a request for reimbursement of those lost revenue dollars. And obviously, we're going through the same analysis. And in the next week or so, we'll be able to come to the commission to let you know what that dollar amount is. But those reimbursements for those lost revenues would go to the ending fund balance. So we would recover those dollars and then the county can use those dollars for whatever it deems appropriate without any restrictions to ARPA requirements. So just a heads up as to, that is an option that may be coming down the pike. We'll calculate what those numbers might be for Mason County. And then we can discuss what to do with those dollars once we receive or understand how much that is.
And as a heads up for the other commission, I do know there's some other projects that are coming out of North Mason. It has been my request that we have them make sure that it goes through a SENS list. I still think that's important that other Commissioners, you know, you may not. So I just wanted to bring that forward when they called me for advice. My advice was go through a process, get it on a SENS list to make sure that it's vetted. But I don't direct them what to do. I'm just telling them what I told them. And I know Frank was dealing with another one that wasn't producing documents. And you have to produce the documents. If you don't produce the documents, how are we supposed to verify and justify? So for anybody that's doing this process, you have to produce the documents that are asked for by the county.
So didn't the county just recently approve a new SENS list?
Yes, but we can add things onto SENS list. We've done it over the years before. But it still should go through a process. And the process this time, though, instead of being EDC-driven, will come through the County Commission first and documents will be provided, presented, and then it'll be discussed probably with us. But it's still, it's just my personal belief that, you know, anytime you go for grants in this, in this state, you always usually have to be on the SENS list somewhere. And I think it's important that we, we don't have special treatment for anybody. I think Commissioner Shutey was also very strong on making sure things on the SENS list earlier in this process. I don't know if that has changed or anything, but.
That has been a really helpful measuring stick.
So as we move forward, I will make sure that they get put on the SENS list or get brought to the board in conjunction with putting it onto the SENS list. At the same time, it goes onto this priority list. But as we move forward, we'll continue looking at this list. If the commission can take a look at how they would prioritize the balance of the funding. And then next week or the week after, we can talk about what would be the next steps in taking these funds and utilizing them for purposes that are outlined in this list. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Next item is funding for Housing Authority. Diane?
Good morning. So the Housing Authority is asking the county for some financial assistance. As you know, they've been operating as a volunteer board and they haven't had an executive director since they've come back, a paid executive director, since they've come back to the county back like in 2010. So they're asking for financial assistance from the county so they can hire a part-time executive director and work towards replacing the Cascade Management Contract that they have been using. And then also contract with the CPA Teresa Johnson, who's a CPA that the county has used. And then pay their clerical assistance, which is provided by Public Health. So it's just shy of 100,000 that would be from current expense. And they're asking the county to do this for them.
If I can, I'll jump in now on it also. We're at a position now on that board where things are just about to change. There's been a lot of stonewalling, a lot of bad things that have occurred in the past. And it's very, very necessary for that contract with the CPA so we can not only get up to date on a lot of things, but also verify quite a bit. The motion that was passed through that board, of which remember, I'm only an ex-official, I don't vote, was to request the money for not just the executive director, but there's also a caveat in there that although it's for two years for continuity, it will be re-looked at within one year because it's their expectation that they're going to be up and running within one year and able to pay for it themselves. So that was actually part of the request is to let you know that it would, even though it would be two years, it'd be looked at within one year to have them cover it at that point. This is something, you know, from the beginning, we've been told that we were going to stand by them. This is the time where they need it. But I honestly believe that we're on the verge of something actually pretty wonderful. Kathy Haig is excited, is, I'll get out, because she looks like she made it through the process long enough to where this thing, if we support them, this thing will be saved. And I would expect honestly that we'll be talking about construction. You know, getting rid of problems in construction within two years.
So is Teresa Johnson, the CPA Johnson, is she going to do an audit?
Yes.
Is Cascade going to be audited?
Yeah, and I reminded them that they, because I, there is a worry, just being straight, that they may not want to come forward with issues. And I reminded them that they have a real estate license aside from everything else. And there are different avenues that we can make sure that they have to comply and work with this. So in Washington State, you have to have a real estate license to be a company like this. You can't do it without it. So I think we're going to have some help all the way around. And this CPA is the one that we actually use here at the county already. This is the one that we use to save us through the Auditor's Office issues from years ago and still do. So if you haven't recognized the name.
Yeah, yeah, did recognize the name. And I'm getting the one to, I'm sorry, to use HR to post for this part-time executive director position.
Say that again?
I'm guessing they'll want to use our HR department for assistance on posting for that director position.
I would think so. We need to keep them separate, I would believe.
I'm just not clear how they could do it on their own. They don't even know how.
No, they'll be able to figure it out. As a matter of fact, we've actually created the position and we're going to be getting interim immediately.
Okay.
There's people out there, good ones.
So the $66,000 for the executive director, is that for the two years or is that for a year?
I believe it's $50,000 a year plus the different taxes and stuff that come with it. So I would say that that would be one year.
Okay.
And even though the term here was used part-time, that wasn't the term that was used. It'll be a salaried position from their discussions that will be expected to do all the hours that are necessary, not just set up as a part-time position. So there's going to be a lot of work needed in the very first year, without a doubt. It's, as things go forward, it's going to change over from an entity to where they're paying out to this company to where they're going to be doing everything internally. They already have people lined up that they're working to bring in to do the construction. They had some, to give you an idea how bad it is, they had a little flooding issue that when you go out and you go to Serp Pro and everything else, it turns into $100-plus thousand issue. And then the interesting thing was the company actually tried to not go through the insurance company for something like that. There's a lot of changes that are about to happen. It's going to, I honestly, from the bottom of my heart, I believe that this is going to not just save the organization, but change it around to where it will be a fully functioning one, doing stuff for the community compared to where it's at now.
So would we be doing a contract with them like we do with the other entities that we fund with for housing and things like that? So that we make sure that there's?
I would expect that we have to, that we have to put something together, what it's used for.
Okay, so I mean, I would be supportive, you know, I mean, I want to see that, I want to see that agreement first, but I am there. You know, I think I don't have any issue contributing to the Housing Authority. We've done it in the past for capital. So, but I'd like to see an agreement hammered out that they can sign and we can sign. So that we all have the same set of expectations.
Absolutely.
And then that would also be reviewed by Tim, correct? Whitehead?
I would hope.
Speaking of, who is the Housing Authority use for their counsel, their legal counsel?
We just got them connected with somebody and I can't remember her name. Frank, what was her name?
Allison Smith.
Yeah.
It's a law firm down in Vancouver, Washington, who works with a number of housing authorities.
That was brought together by Tim. Tim and I, we sat in the office, we talked to him, they were given some free advice for quite a while. And then we made it a possibility for them to actually work together. I don't know if it's been taken advantage of in any manner at this point because everything's been working and coming together pretty well. And Tim had helped out from the very beginning. Our Tim, Tim, our attorney.
Yeah, great.
So I'll bring it back to them with your permission and say that we are favorable with moving forward, but we need to have an actual contract written up to show how the money will be spent and in what manner. Does that sound about correct with, you know, was it running through our attorney first?
And then this would be rebriefed.
Work for me.
So the Housing Authority will bring forward that contract then, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'll help them to put it together and maybe we'll reach out to that attorney. Or, you know, this interim may help too. We'll get something together. Thank you, guys, by the way. Like I said, it's amazing. We've all had our battles with them and watching Kathy smiling again was pretty wonderful because she held on with her teeth for a lot of years. I got a few teeth marks in me from it, so I don't know. But very happy for her right now because I think she lasted long enough to where it's turning around right now in front of her eyes.
Yeah, I saw her in the grocery store. She looked a little relieved.
Just a little. Okay, what else you got, Frank?
Next item is an update on the County Administrator search. Just wanted to let the board know that the search closed on Friday last week. Prothman is bringing forward the list of applicants. There are seven applicants in that list. Prothman and I will be going through the vetting process this week to confirm who meet the qualifications and who do not. And then we'll have a list on the next, at our next briefing to discuss timings or to discuss the list with all of the information, applications, and then to discuss interview process and interview times. So.
Kevin, you lit up, are you talking?
Yeah, I was just going to ask if Prothman will also be making recommendations on style of interview and rounds of interviews and that kind of thing.
Absolutely. So when we get to how many, and because there are so few, there may be a request to interview as many of them as possible. But next Monday, they will come forward with a list of who, what, when, where, and how. And to discuss how to proceed and to move forward.
Any questions on that one, Commissioners? Okay, Frank, what else you got?
Next is July Financial Statements, Jennifer. Love this part.
Thank you, Frank. Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I like this part too. And again, I'm happy to report good news to you. So beginning on page two, we have the revenue for current expense. This year through July, we're at close to 26 million. Last year, we were at close to 22 million. So we're at a $4.1 million increase over last year. And the majority of that is in the Treasurers Department. We're up 2.7 million. And then in Community Development, we're up about 500,000 over last year. We're at 66% of our budgeted revenue this year. Last year, we were at 57%.
Are we taking into account any of the ARPA funds anywhere in this?
No, the ARPA funds are in their own special revenue fund, 155. So no, we're not.
Wonderful.
Is that, will that, so I guess maybe the extension of that question is, we voted a couple of weeks ago to do a couple hundred thousand to the Treasurer's Office for recovery. Will that then show in this revenue line when you do August's financials?
We won't have it done by August, but yes, eventually that will show as revenue in the Treasurers Department. Yes.
Okay, so just, it would be important to note that.
Okay.
I think at that time.
Okay, so moving on to page three and four, we have the Treasure Department receipts. And we are in this year through July for the treasure, we have 18 million roughly in revenue. And last year, we were at about 15 million, 15.3 million. And this year, we're at 69% of our total budget for revenue in the Treasurers Department. Last year, we were at 58%. So the majority of that increase, we have 800,000 in property taxes, but we have 600,000 less in the road diversion. So a couple hundred thousand higher in property taxes. We have the sales and use tax that's up about 1.1 million. Criminal justice is up about 100,000, forest excise tax about 125,000. City-county assistance, about 330,000.
But on that road diversion, that only counts on the overall amount, but on the budget difference, we budgeted that. So that should be no, our over amount compared to budget is still completely accurate, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that since the line for property taxes, it looks so much higher. You know, it's 800,000 higher than last year. You know, that there is an offset for that. That's all I wanted to point out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the Timber Trust, we've received about 519,000 more than last year. So that's a a nice bonus over last year. On the interest and other earnings, we're down about 285,000 from last year. So again, we're about 2.7 million over in total from last year. So any other questions on that?
What do you think is the difference of why we've lost so much revenue on the interest?
Interest overall is down everywhere.
But that much compared to last year, because last year was extremely low?
Yeah, it's very, very low. I forget what the exact interest rate is, but it's next to, next to nothing. So we have started on page five, the expenditure for current expense expenditures. We have 21,670,000 roughly. Last year, we were at 20,500,000 approximately. We're at 53% of our total expenditures this year. And we were at 53% of our total budgeted expenditures last year. Most departments are staying where they should be and the ones that are where they should be budget-wise. And the ones that aren't, I think most of them have a budget amendment in the works for tomorrow. We have Superior Court, they had a payout, I think that part of that came out of there and that'll be reversed and into the non-departmental. So they're not really quite at 67% of their total expenditure budget. So next year, that should, I mean, next month, that should be reflected as a little more accurate. For the Sheriff Department, they're at a total of 55.5% if you count the sheriff and the traffic policing together.
But how can they be at 111%? That's not possible, right?
Well, that's just in the traffic policing.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, so if you add those two together and take their total budget amount of the 14.55 million, they're at 55.5%, right where they should be.
No, I guess what I meant was since that No, I guess what I meant was since that's only a specific amount, how can they be over?
Um, so we've budgeted 1.08 million, but they've actually expended through traffic policing, the 1.202 million there. And we just like to show that they are expending, I mean, it's actually a good thing that they're over on that traffic policing. Does that make more sense? They've expended more there than what's.
No, I I understand that, but that money has to come from something else. They can't expend more than that out of that line.
Their their total in the Sheriff Department is is right where it should be. So I mean, they they can expend more out of the line as long as they're not expending more out of their total department. Does that help?
If you say so.
Okay.
But I would expect they would stay within their line and and bill accordingly to the to the part of the department that it's supposed to be.
I think that they're still charging to the traffic policing as was done in the past and we lowered that traffic policing, the amount that's allocated there. So um, it would actually be very inaccurate for them to report um, a lower amount if they're still doing the same amount of work there. Does that help?
We'll talk a little more about it offline. Thank you though.
You're welcome. Okay, so we have the courthouse security, they're at 79%, but they have a $89,000 budget amendment, which will bring them to a little less than 52% right where they should be. Um, parks and trails, um, is it 61%? And that's a little concerning to me. I haven't dove into that to see exactly what that is, but they may need a budget amendment in the future. Um, the coroner as well, they're at 61% and I know that their motor, motor pool fuel is a little bit high. They might, might need a little bit more there, so anyway.
Well, you got them that other vehicle. Anytime you add a vehicle in there, we're gonna have to pay more.
Yeah, so I'll I'll take another look at that and maybe suggest an adjustment in the future. Um, moving on to page six, the six-year specific revenue streams um, through July, almost everything is up, which is great. Um, community development. Again, about $500,000 over last year in their revenue. We've got the lodging tax up there for for 414 last year, 174,000. So that's a huge increase. The REIT one um, continues to continues to go up there at 1.1 million this year and about 800,000 last year, so um, huge increases there. So any questions or comments on this?
Does anybody else notice that the, that the 173,723 block is larger than the 248,682 block? Under lodging tax?
Quite a, quite attention to detail there, Commissioner.
Whoops. Okay, so um, going, moving on to page seven, we have the the sales tax details. So July was a record month for sales tax collections, 754,000. I believe that's the most we've ever collected in any one month. And I feel like I've been saying that now the last, you know, few months. So anyway, we're at 4.6 million in sales tax collections and with uh, these numbers were projected to receive about 7.3, 7.4 million, somewhere in there to the end of the year. With sales tax. So page eight, we have the six-year financial recap. Uh, in current expense, we're at 20,595,405 dollars at the end of July. Um, in our revenue, again, we're at 66% for overall current expense of our total budget. And 53% of our total expenditures. So there's the the recap there. Moving on to page nine, we have the special fund cash balances. We are at 43,081,012 dollars through the end of July for all of our special funds, which is a huge increase over the last, last year, 32,323. And then the prior four years before that. In 2016, we were at close to 26 million overall, so so everything is is up. Uh, moving on to page 10, we have the motor pool budget actual comparison. So through July, we have expended 925,212 dollars. Our total budget is 1,338,888 and we're at 69.1% in total of our overall budgeted expenditures. We, we have all of our cars in service that we ordered in 2020. And so the motor pool capital updates are fully expended at this point. We will probably need to do a budget amendment or almost certainly need to do one for the the cars that come in that we ordered this year for our 2022 rates. A lot of those are not a lot, but some of them will start to trickle in at the end of this year. So, so that will be um, a budget amendment ask to include some of those capital outfit costs in this year. And then some of the departments, again, the coroner, they, they are gonna need a budget amendment here. Um, and then facilities and parks, I'm not sure that I added enough fuel, I mean, fuel prices are high right now, higher than we've budgeted for. So I may need to do it, to do another adjustment there. So moving on to page 11, we have the revenue for the special and other funds. We are at 38,262, 217 in revenue. And last year we were at 22,52852. We're at 75% of our total budget this year compared to 54% last year. On the expenditure side, we're at 27,309,957. And this is page 12. And compared to last year, 19,542,351, we're at 45% of our total expenditures this year compared to last year, 38%. So, um, any questions on any of that?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Great news again.
Those are some pretty scrumptious numbers there, Jennifer.
Yeah.
Scrumptious. Okay, I'll, I'll go with that one.
Okay. Um, so the, the last thing that I have is the chart of accounts redesigned statement of work. So we, we received the quote from Munis. It's again 28,000. That's exactly what it was last year. But I want to ask for approval for the chair to sign and for this to go on the next meeting. So that's why I'm bringing it forward.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you very much. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Hi, Leo. All right, Frank, what do we got next? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Next item we have is WCRP crime policy. Nicole?
Oh, thank you. Good morning. Um, so I had the chance to go to our risk pool, risk pool conference last month where they updated us on the rates and coverages that were selected for the fiscal year of 21, 2021 to 2022. Um, there's two items that we need to provide a decision for to the risk pool, one being if we are going to continue to keep our 5 million in excess of 20 million policy, this is an optional part of our policy. Um, the concern, well, the the issue brought up is that the rate of the premium has gone up by 130% this year. Um, in the last year, we paid 4,299 dollars for this excess 5 million policy over our 20 million coverage. This year, we're looking at a premium of 5,588 dollars based on that 130% increase. Um, I did reach out and try and find out if we could go, you know, get some premium costs for if we went out independently to get this. I haven't heard anything back. The only thing I have heard back from Arthur J Gallagher is, is that the market's tough right now and it's looking like if we wanted to carry this outside of the risk pool, the excess carriers are looking at at least a $50,000 premium. So, um, yeah, essentially what we're asking for is for the board to approve us to carry to continue to keep that excess in 5 million over the 20 million with risk pool. Especially um, for the high dollar claims that have been coming in. So that's one of the topics. And go ahead, sorry.
Nicole, what, what would be, what kind of claims would you make against this coverage?
Against not having it?
No, 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 like what, what, I mean, what does it cover? Like what do we, like what would we be using this for?
Any sort of claims that we get that are beyond, I mean, we've had a couple high dollar claims that would have been a part of this. Um, we I mean, anything from excessive force or anything like that. It's any claim that's gonna come in a high dollar amount. Once we get past this, once we get past our, um, our self-insured retention, we go into the excess, the 10 million with the reinsurers and then we've got another 10 million, which totals our 20 million coverage and anything beyond that comes into that excess 5 million coverage above the 20 million. Um, we have used our excess, we've not had to use the excess, the 5 million over the 20 million, but that's not to say that we might in the future. Claims are getting so high right now that, I mean, I, I would want to keep it and that's just based off of what I see over on my end.
Thanks, thanks to me.
Um, and then, so the other decision that we need to make is based off of our crime policies. So the county in the past has bought our own, purchased our own crime, crime policy independent of the risk pool. In the past, we've paid 3,786 dollars annually for this premium. However, um, this year, Risk Pool had reached out to look at a group purchase crime policy within the Risk Pool and found that, um, we could, within the group policy for all 26 counties, um, we could get a policy for 38,000. Calculating that out to $3.32.4 cents per employee, which would be about five, $1,500, $1,529 premium based on an average of 460 employees, which is less than half of what we're paying on an annual basis independently. And not only that, but, um, the group purchase crime policy would cover gaps that we don't have with our own policy right now.
So it's a savings of how much?
Um, it's a savings of, I'd say about 20, $200. So we were paying 37.86 and with this group purchase policy and that's, you know, considering that all counties participate, if we get a few counties that don't participate, of course, that $3.32.4 cents per county employee will go up. But based off of this, yeah, it's a $1,529 premium added to it. So we are gonna be saving money if we select that and we get better coverage.
You've done your homework. This is good.
Thank you.
Are you in favor of moving forward, Commissioners?
Yep.
I am.
Okay, there we go, Nicole.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nicole.
And thank you. That's all we have today, Commissioners.
Any questions for staff Commissioners? Then we thank you very much. Uh, next up, we're gonna go ahead and move into community services with Dave Wyndham.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hi.
Happy Monday. Uh, let's just go ahead and start right off with House Bill 1590, that's in your packet here. So the the summary is, uh, House Bill 1590 gives the county the ability to add a one-tenth of one percent tax, sales tax, to fund housing, affordable housing to secure especially those with mental health, substance abuse, those sorts of things. And this really kind of dovetails nicely into the conversation we had earlier this morning around with the Housing Authority and looking at some things to do as we move into the future. Uh, I know the Thurston County Commission is looking at the same uh, piece of legislation and I know that there's, they have it on their agenda as well. So uh, estimated revenue is gonna be essentially the same as the mental health fund, still the one-tenth of one percent. Uh, you have in your packet, the the law itself, yeah, proposed ordinance and then some letters of support. So I guess I would take questions from there.
So how much would this raise? Um, I'd say the average person, how much more would they be paying?
I can, I can run that number. I don't have it in front of me in the packet here, so.
You mean like on their sales tax?
Right, right. And I know it's not just, um, and that's.
It's kind of hard because it depends on how much you spend.
Well, I'd have to go through mine and see how much I'm spending on with Amazon. And this would not just be Mason County residents. This would be anybody shopping in Mason County, right?
Correct, yeah, based on sales tax.
Mr. Shetty, you got an opinion?
Yeah, so this is, I mean, this is something that's been discussed quite a bit uh, at the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Um, that group in particular sees this as an opportunity um, to help with the variety of housing projects in the community, including permanent supportive housing, um, and that, that type of, that type of a project. There's probably also some connection to the Housing Authority that that could be made in order to help, uh, you know, with them. Um, you know, and future projects that they may have. Um, certainly meets those, those qualifications, I think. And the other, the other part of it is, is that it's, it, you know, it does tie in nicely with what we're doing with the one-tenth of one percent for the treatment sales tax. Um, and would, would be able to help, uh, you know, expand some of that work, given that a percentage of this fund is to be, uh, is eligible to be used for, um, folks with behavioral health issues. So especially, um, you know, in light of some of the challenges that we've seen as, as the behavioral health system has transitioned. Um, and have more and more folks with those issues, uh, needing services in the community versus those being provided at a place like Western State. So um, you know, I definitely think there's room for more conversation, but, uh, the, the Housing, uh, Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board has been supportive of this. Um, and, you know, I think it would be worthwhile looking at what, what other, um, you know, what we could do with it uh, to help support the work we're already doing in the housing world and in the, in the SUD and behavioral health world as well.
So me over the years, uh, I was involved when we re-upped the one-tenth of one percent for the mental health. But one of the things about it is we also knew where it was going and how it was gonna be broke down. I automatically am not in favor of a tax increase. That's just how I roll, but at the same time, I try to keep an open mind. But I would not be interested unless I see a breakdown of what we're gonna do with it. I'd like to actually see the frame, the framework of how it will be spent, at least the majority of it. That's just my personal opinion, but we're not ready to put it on at this moment. Are you, are you asking to put it on now?
No, this, this is a briefing to bring it out, get some feedback on what you want to see in it and we can develop a proposed ordinance from here.
We definitely want to see a breakdown in how we would be using the money. I wanna, I don't wanna. we would be using the money. I want to, I don't want to put another tax. I I agree with Commissioner Netherland on this. I don't want to put another tax on our people. Unless I know exactly where that money or how it's going to be used and how how it can benefit um all of Mason County.
I'm positive we could spend it. I just wanted to know.
There's a good, a good way, and I I absolutely want to help everybody that we can. But I don't want to vote for something blindly.
Any further comments on that one? So Dave, yeah, if you don't mind, uh we'd like to see a structure.
Okay, so that's that ways, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I was just gonna also add to that um the bill actually outlines allowable uses as well. So I encourage Commissioners to read through that and get get a sense for what things are in there. And I guess, you know, then, you know, if there are certain things that you want to see within those parameters, you know, have a conversation with uh with Dave and Todd, and that'll help, you know, maybe build that out a little bit more with some of your input.
And I did. I I met with Todd. He came in and uh I know for myself, I'd like to see a brick and mortar investments and that type of thing. But again, I'd like to see it broke down.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot of flexibility with this that we we haven't been able to get out of um whether it be um you know, C H G or hand funding and and all the other uh recording fee dollars and that kind of thing, um you know, that that have some restrictions. This provides a little bit more flexibility, um you know, to support um projects that that I think are really meaningful for communities. So I think there's definitely some opportunities to piece that out a little bit more, and and I hope we take an opportunity to do that.
You need anything further on that one, Dave, or is that?
No, and actually, it segues nicely into the next item.
Okay.
Okay, so our next item is a temporary full-time housing community health specialist position in community house and community services. Handle additional housing grant deliverables. So and this is one we've been talking about for some times. We we've outlined this a little more. Uh we had talked originally about putting something like this in with the planning. I felt that it really wasn't appropriate there. It's more appropriate to be in public health and then coordinate with the planning office. So this person uh we look at is a way to uh bring grants in to do that work, to facilitate what those things look like. And then and then work with planning to say, okay, if if we're going to do housing, where is this housing going to go? What's housing going to look like? You know, talking about zoning and placement, all those sorts of things. So um this person's uh disposition would live in community health, but really be coordinating between community health and uh planning department.
But I'll just say I'm supportive of this. I I think this is uh necessary, given um the amount of funding that's currently coming through our housing um section right now. I'm also concerned with what happens when the eviction moratorium is lifted uh here in the next several weeks and being able to manage that workflow. Um so this really, in my mind, addresses two issues, one short term being, what do we do with the influx of money flowing in right now? Um how do we get that out to work in the community so that we don't have people um in large numbers being evicted here in the next several weeks? And then um you know, also, I like the I I like the opportunity that increasing our our capacity in housing to work with planning so that we could start looking at um you know, the county more holistically, um get some of these projects moving that um you know, create units uh if for the community um and keep and keep getting to keep people housed longer term. So um I think this is, this is a really good, it's a temporary position based on some of the funding sources, um but gives us an opportunity to to kind of just continue to pull out of the issues that we have and use those federal and state dollars most effectively.
Yeah, I I I'm very concerned about what's going to happen at the end of the moratorium. I spoke with um had an opportunity to sit down with Congressman Kellmer, and we had some very um very good conversations, I'd like to say. And he did say um mention that, you know, there are changes coming the end of September, so I think we need to to be aware. Maybe let others get that, get that word out there that changes are coming. And so don't be relaxed in in asking for help to get your your rents paid and your utility paid. There are resources, resources out there. All you have to do is reach out, and so no, I I would be supportive of this position.
Are we uh since it is being put up as temporary, are we going to have a date where it will be re-examined? How are we setting it up?
Have we handled the other positions that we've put in that are temporary? Have we put a date on those?
You know, if my recommendation would be, uh we put a a date, uh re-look at this end of December twenty-two.
And the funding goes through then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm supportive with that caveat.
Okay, I can make those adjustments. We'll stick on the next action agenda then.
Okay, now this has gone through uh H R and structured accordingly and
Right, so we I I do say I didn't get the salary in there, so I'll need to tag that in there as well, so.
Yeah, please make sure everything goes through H R. We have it specific with our parameters.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, and I'm happy to announce that Dr. Carrie Gardner has signed the contract. So um uh as health officer, and we've had some conversations this week about that. I talked to her for quite a little bit on Friday. It's going to take a little bit of time for her to get her license um registered in Washington. So my recommendation is we go ahead and get, if I could, get this on the action agenda for tomorrow, so I have that in hand, so Washington has it, so we can start a license uh process, and then keep uh Dr. Um Stein on for uh through the end of September, so those two can cross-coordinate. It's not that big of an expense. Um and then I've I've talked to her a little bit about coming in for one to two weeks uh full-time, just to to work with staff, get to know us, you know, learn the county, learn all those things. As a reminder, she does have a home here in Mason County. She does work also uh out of state. Um so she's going to be bouncing back and forth. Uh we had originally approved her for this position, and then because at that time we were really looking at um full-time Mason County resident, um it it wasn't working because she hadn't done other work. Now um allowing this to be done uh remote with some in-person, you know, solve that barrier. So uh we're very excited to to um see Dr. Gardner come on board.
You're really going to like her, folks. I I was, matter of fact, all of us were impressed with her, and she was the right fit for the community. She just really was, and you'll see, you'll see it right off the bat, just like we did.
So what I'm looking for is to go on to Dash and Jenna tomorrow, if I could, so we can get the the that stuff processed.
We just added something else, so I'm supportive.
I am good as well.
I'm I am as well, and I think going forward, I think it's going to be a hybrid for for most departments being
Yeah, it really is. So it just kind of as a background, Clark County, we had explored over the last six months doing something of a uh regional health officer concept, and we did, we started doing that, but they ran out of bandwidth when it got to Mason County. Um so uh Dr. Melnick hired uh an assistant health officer who's covering five counties. Dr. Melnick is covering a county, you know, Clark County, and they just didn't have enough to extend that to Mason County. But uh this gives us our our own person, so I'm really excited.
Me too.
All right, yeah, anybody have any other questions for Dave? Dave, is that all you had?
And the last thing, uh Commissioners, is just a COVID update, if I could, really quick. On uh Friday, the health officers um wrote a letter, was submitted to the Governor's Office over the weekend, asking for uh indoor um mask mandate across the state. Some counties have already done this, so we've got Thurston County has already done it, and so has um Kitsap County, Thurston. I mean, um King County. Um I expect to see the governor come out with a mandatory mask, indoor mask mandate today, tomorrow, uh tomorrow at the latest, probably. We did go through the uh vaccine mandate does not apply to any of our county folks, so get that clarified. Uh we've been very busy. Uh I talked to our folks downstairs a little bit ago. Over the weekend, we've had a minimum of thirty-nine, and we're still counting. So it's, it is on a steep increase. And we are having more hospitalizations than we've ever had. So I think we're, today we're at eight, but we had, we had nine and one out, and then two out, and then two came in, so it's it's staying busy. What's what we're having a problem with is lack of staff beds, not necessarily lack of beds total. It's it's a staffing issue across all the 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 hospital uh system. So we're watching it. My my staff is coming back from vacation, so when it, when the rates all went down in July, we started getting people out on vacation. And now we're starting to get them back so we can be fully staffed again.
In Kitsap County, uh the Bremerton Urgent Care and all that had been closed down. It was supposed to be temporary uh because of staffing. And then sadly, now the Silverdale, which they just built and everything, that's had to slow down because of staffing, even though they don't, they're using the staffing from Bremerton now. And they're still falling so far behind that the lines are going out the door, and ambulances are waiting in the parking lot. It is a very scary time. You know, take, matter of fact, take the time to thank uh Kevin Shooty's wife when you get a chance, folks, because right now she's doing stuff that we're just begging others would stand up to do, so please extend our appreciation to her, Commissioner.
I will. Thank you. I appreciate that. So it, you know, kind of, it it kind of begs a couple of questions, Dave. So you know, I mean, I, how how does this compare to where we were, you know, at the at the peak in the fall? Um are we, is it, is it about the same? Is it worse? I can't imagine it being better, yeah.
Yeah, it's worse.
So from a
Delta seems to have a steeper climb. And then in my research, I'm seeing it has also a steep drop and doesn't have a lot of hang time, so I it it was a big discussion on Friday amongst the health officers with a a wide variety of opinions on it.
So you know, uh uh from a, from a county perspective, I mean, are we thinking about going back to releasing data more regularly? Are we thinking about increasing E O C meetings? You know, what are some things that we should be thinking about in order to to reinforce, you know, the public health response?
Right, so we're looking, going back to uh more frequent E O C meetings, we're talking about a Monday, Thursday with the E O C, especially a around the P I O piece that you need to get that information out. Uh we had, we had scaled back the uh the daily stuff because we're only in one or two cases a day. Um now it's back up, and now that my staff's coming back, um I think we could probably go back to a daily release on that.
I'd like to see you do what some of the other counties are doing, which is not just, they're showing it in the form of a graph that is showing uh uh little people, for example, how many new we have this week, how many of them uh were uh vaccinated? Because there's a lot of misinformation right now that's out there with the the huge percentage people are talking about that are were vaccinated that are being uh hit with COVID again. Uh there's some new information just came out, was it yesterday or Saturday? Uh that was a little bit surprising when it came to how the shots are working. We already knew that Johnson and Johnson for the Delta was only sixty percent to start with, seventy-two for the regular one, I I think it was. Then you had uh you had uh Moderna and Pfizer that were, you know, up in the upper nineties there. But Moderna after, or Pfizer after six months is down to the sixties, uh Moderna is still holding up into the nineties. So just having that information will help people decide what they're going to do.
Yeah, that's that's really a nuanced thing, too, because you have to remember those early, those early testings were done when things were different. First of all, Delta wasn't out there, and a lot of people who were in the the test categories were people who have a pro-vax, and we're already doing the proper things. There are already social distancing and masking. And then when you go to the population at large, where you have um a much broader variety of folks, then those efficacy's tended to come down. But I think the bottom line for people to know is that the vaccines are doing a good job of keeping people from getting extremely sick and staying out of a hospital. You know, when you look at our graph, and I can, I can, I'll certainly put that out today. I've got a graph showing uh rate of of uh hospitalizations for unvaccinated uh community as a whole, and then vaccinated, I mean, it's just really a tiny amount at the bottom, so I can, I can put that out to me.
Yeah, I think that's what we need the public just to see, so they can make their own mind up. As you already know, and everybody here knows, I am not for forcing anybody to do anything. Uh but I am for getting them the education, letting them make their own decision, and then empowering them to do whatever they decide they want to do for or against.
Yep, will do.
Any other questions for Dave? Then uh Commissioners, you okay with a five-minute break? Come back at uh uh ten fifty-seven? All right, see you in ten fifty-seven. Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move into uh our briefing with Public Works, and it looks like Mike Collins is running the show on this one. Hi, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
We're uh we're, Morena is on vacation, so she has dubbed me to uh to speak today. So uh briefing item number one is set a hearing for September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one to consider establishment of twenty-five mile an hour speed limit for Boyer Road. As you know, Boyer Road was one of our gravel road conversions. Uh the crew did an excellent job out there. If you ever want to drop by there and have a look at it. Um but now it's no longer a primitive road, and so we're going to establish speed limit signs and some warning signs.
Very cool. I went out there and saw the construction, so it, you you've got a great crew.
They do. They're doing excellent on these. Next item is uh just a pre-warning of a county road striping. They're going to start about the twenty-third, and they'll run through September uh depending on the weather. And so we'll be in various areas. As soon as we get a little more specific detail on the which areas we're going to be working on, they're going to be working on first, we'll we'll kind of bring that to the board and let people know. Let's see, can we just follow that? Upcoming calendar action, there's a public hearing for Pebble Beach Water District uh on August thirty-first. And as for local work, we are going to be closing Homer Adams Road uh next Monday. So we'll be putting that uh replacing that culvert that failed corrugated metal pipe, and we'll be putting in a thirty-foot wide uh metal structure, so um if you get a chance to drop by there next week, uh the pipe is supposed to arrive the twenty-fifth, so we'll be uh in uh actually constructing the pipe to twenty-fifth, twenty-six, and maybe some on Friday to twenty-seven, so it'll be, it'll be quite the, quite the project. Uh we're also working on old B H uh shoulder reconstruction. Rod and his crew are out there. They're 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 really getting getting that done in preparation for the S T P uh paving project that's uh going to be scheduled soon.
Are we widening that area at all, or just?
Yes, we're doing uh eleven-foot lanes, which are existing, but we're going to pave five-foot shoulders, too. So we'll have uh we'll have that extra, extra width for for vehicles and for pedestrians alike, so.
So eleven foot is the number, uh I remember it's when in the municipal, they were able to get it down to ten and a half. I don't want to do that. Don't get me wrong. Somebody said that if by doing that will slow down traffic. To me, I thought by doing that, we could put traffic a little tighter together with them moving faster and create more of an issue, but
Yeah, that that's, that's always the the uh the rub. Uh you try to narrow those down to try to cause people to slow down, but if they still are comfortable with that speed, then yes, you just actually make them closer proximity, so.
Do we have a minimum requirement?
Minimum, uh it depends on our our size of our road. Uh if it's an O eight, O nine, a minimum is eleven feet. I mean, O eight, O seven, excuse me. It's it's eleven feet, so. Uh and if you get a chance to get up on the Belle Fair to who you're, uh we just completed chip sealing about three point seven miles of uh of that road. Uh we actually chip sealed the road and widened shoulders uh too, and so it looks like you could land an airplane there, so. Uh once we get it striped, it'd be nice.
There was an accident here the other day up uh by Heard Road up there. Was it due to any of this? Uh we also did some some changes on the infrastructure there at uh the Effindol Pass Road, and that connection, was any of that to blame for?
No, this uh the accident was done in a tangent, straight stretch. It was, it was near the road you're describing, but uh had, we had, we had not changed any of the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's well, I got.
Commissioners, do you have anything for them?
I don't.
Uh just, I don't see Richard on here, but one thing you could uh please pass on to Richard. We're still hoping to see some numbers for uh the people for the sewer systems uh uh on being able to maybe utilize some ARPA funds and how to, how to work with those systems or help uh, on being able to maybe utilize some ARPA funds and how to, how to work with those systems or help those people. So if you could just put a little tap on a shoulder as a reminder, because I haven't heard anything, I don't know if the other Commissioners have.
Will do.
All right, other than that, I think that's all we have then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Commissioner, discussion.
Got nothing.
Then how about a motion?
So moved.
Second, here are no objection. We are adjourned. See you tomorrow.